Well.
Looks like we have video P2, so.
So good, let's, uh, we'll call them in.
The United States of America, the Republic of Washington, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, got everybody here tonight, so we've got that. On the agenda, they've only changed, I'm aware of, is on number 12, is District 2021 down four, not six.
Correct.
I will check in the table. Okay? That's the only one I'm aware of, it's just a naming thing, otherwise it's.
Motion to approve agenda.
Said change, right?
Said change.
Hey, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
Plucking.
Second, okay, all say aye.
Aye.
And here is this consent agenda. Any changes on there, guys? Any questions? Then we'll look for motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
The motion, can I get a second?
Yeah.
Can I get a second? Right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Right, any changes on the, uh, you guys who saw on the special city council meeting minutes? Motion to accept, what that is?
Make a motion to approve the special city council meeting minutes.
Okay, yeah, make the motion, can I get a second? Okay, all say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries regular city council meeting minutes. Those are the things that are the correct direction. Check, make some motion, second?
Second.
There was a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right. Comment, anybody that you didn't want to chat at all tonight? Going once. Right? Well, the sheriffs report won't be tonight, we'll do that for next. The next meeting, we had some circumstances, so. Jason.
The Park District one, I could just touch base.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, this is gonna be a new category that we'll have, we'll probably just keep as a standing one on the agenda, uh, we plan to have him update monthly. We'll have him start doing that in June.
Okay.
So, that was, make issue with Wade there, had to, I jumped the gun on this one, said, hey, let's throw it on there, uh, but I wanted to bring this to your attention, we'll be doing park district updates.
Okay.
About once a month.
Well, that's good. All right, um, with that, we'll go on to number 10 then, Jase, you got this one?
Uh, Mr. Mayor members of the council, the application before you this evening is a public hearing for variance requested 6851 Sunnyside Drive. The variance had granted, as requested by the applicant, would reduce the side yard setback to 7.1 feet to accommodate the addition of a third garage stall. The property is currently within core city limits and its own residential estates. Uh, the property, as it sits today, is approximately .86 acres, uh, and the current residence sits approximately 19 feet from the East property line. The residential estate zone requires a minimum of one acre lot and front and rear setbacks of 50 feet and side yard setbacks of 25 feet. The property, as it exists today, is not able to meet those minimum side yard, or meet the minimum lot size of the RE zone, and due to that orientation of the house, it's unable to meet the minimum side yard of east side setback for that property, um, where that garage is proposed. Uh, it appears, just in looking back, that this property did exist prior to being annexed into the city. Uh, the zoning that was applied to the property following annexation, found it nearly impossible for the property to achieve lot and yard requirements as it currently sits without the addition. Due to that fact, though, staff could support the granting of this variance as the issue has created a no fault of the property owner and was relatively due to the, the zoning that was applied to that property. Uh, the variance, not at least on its face, appears that it would have no threat or impact to the neighborhood of the city. Um, on April 12th, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the variance to city council, however, they recommended that the variance request be no less than 10 feet to be compliant with other zoning districts within the city. Staff would maintain their original recommendation that the city council accept the findings and recommendations of the staff report and approve the variance as originally requested by the applicant for 6851 Sunnyside Drive.
Okay. Um, Russ, you got any, you want to add on to that? That went, uh, four and all at the commission, so.
We went four and all at 10 feet.
10 feet, yep, with that recommendation.
The reason we went with 10 feet was, uh, 7.1 feet is less than R1, less than R2, less than R3, and less than R4. Uh, R1, R2, and R3 are 10 feet. And basically, what? What we're going with is a setback that we wouldn't have a problem granting to anyone in the same setup. Basically, he's got a non-conforming lot now, and he can stay non-conforming forever. But, uh, that's, we went with the 10 feet because, like I said, it's
Yeah.
It'd be the, it'd be a, a common one for most of the smaller lots.
Mm-hmm.
Was there any, uh, public comment?
There was, uh, the neighbor came in and said he doesn't have a problem with it.
Yeah, that would be the neighbor closest to the property?
Yep.
All right, so what I'll do, Lucas, for you is I'll make sure we open the serve public hearing.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, anybody got any comments, your question on this here?
On the contractor, on, uh, supposed to do the petition. And we, when we designed it, um, we went through the neighborhood and looked, and there's area views, and we took the GIS map, and there's existing garages that are seven, eight feet from property lines, clearly two doors down from this. So, there's already, what we saw is non-conforming lot, that's why we designed it this way. Um, on the note, on the left side of the screen there, is where their sewer is, so we couldn't add on to the house that side of it. So, we're adding to the, once dealt with garage, then we're adding up to.
How much room do you have behind?
Behind the house?
Well, I'm just curious, is it possible to do a drive-through to a third stall in some manner, shape, or form, or does the house take up too much space?
The house is 21 feet, or 29 feet, whatever it is off the side. Garage, the, the existing garage right now is 19 feet to the property line.
And the existing garage is a double garage?
Yeah.
So, in order to add a third stall, what I'm asking is, could you put the stall behind the existing two stall or not?
Be fun. Let me get to it. And the 10-foot recommendation there is, we could be end up with a nine-foot garage, which is not garage stall effectively.
Right, so, um, we designed this. Why don't you guys stand up and introduce yourselves?
My name is, uh, I assist with the design of the project. Um, so, reason that we have the 7.1 feet is, this is basically as, as far away as we can come away from that property line, where we would achieve an additional stall. Anything less gets to be an unusable garage stall, so this does not, uh, work. Um, and the left side of the property, you can't drive around building because that was the, um, that big sewer system. And on the right side of the property, you don't feel that we can even get a proper turning radius back in and out, that would take up a massive amount of space. Um, initially, we do feel that this is a very, sort of, um, we're not adding a great deal to impervious surface with extensive driveways, et cetera, or a separate building, and this is, in our mind, the most cost-effective, cheap, desire. So, and, um, as was stated earlier, we really seem to like, a lot, I don't know if you guys have the graphic that was prepared to really about the number, sort of, lots that don't come along, any of the codes, well, there are no real setbacks, missing fourth in that neighborhood. I can bring something, but at any rate, um, we put this at, at the smallest and cheapest get the space. So, we're asking for the 7.1 versus 10.
Do you have any questions at all?
I, I'm just curious, um, our fire chief is here, and I know that there have been a couple properties in neighboring communities lately that have had some issues. Can you get a fire truck through 7.1 feet, Steve?
No. But it is not 7.1 feet, because there's an additional 12 feet on the side of the property.
And there are no trees there? I see trees here, whose trees are those?
There might be trees in, in point of, for the tree, the front, but the drive would fill the access. Front of the side, that tree, what tree are you?
I've got some pictures here, and I'm not sure. That's the neighbors? So, is there any, any concern with these trees here?
That's the neighbors two doors down, I took a picture of it because
I've got a bunch of pictures here, so I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
That's a neighbor's house two doors to the west, and I took a picture because they built their garage, I don't know, five feet off the tree line, which is the property line?
Yeah, the tree line.
I just, I took a picture of that example of the, the neighbor has a third stall within five feet of their property line.
And I, I understand the general consensus regarding the thought process there. At the time that this subdivision was annexed, it was brought in under, was it RE zoning, which is non-conforming, so pretty much all these lots, there's a potential that they could be non-conforming? Okay.
Do you also have any other questions?
The closest property is 12 feet further in on their property, so at least it's the neighbors here.
Which one, which one of these is a picture of the actual home?
We don't have a picture of the actual home.
Can I bring a graphic just at our site? Got it. Show you the. So, this is from the GIS, this is the property we're considering, this is the neighbor's in attendance right now. So, we're currently at 19 feet, he's more like 30, maybe 30 feet, I did not mention that one, but this is from the city GIS website.
Right, and I do have that map here, obviously.
Okay, you can just hang on to that.
Russ, I have another question, Rio was gonna ask, is this meet that hardship clause that we've been discussing here, uh, for the last, you know, five years? Did we put this, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
What was the question?
Just wanted to see if this variance met the hardship clauses that we have when we're talking about different variances.
So, do you, do you want me to go through the standards and, and justification? Because those are what provides your reasoning for
Yeah.
granting or denying
That's, that's fine.
variances in the city. So, the standards that the planning commission looks at and what the city council needs to look at when considering these variances are that special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the premises and which are not applicable to other premises in the same zoning district. That literal, literal interpretation of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. Thus, the special conditions and circumstances have not resulted from actions of the applicant, and that granting the variance requested, requested will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied by this ordinance, this ordinance to other premises, uh, premises is. The justification for, uh, the variance that the reason set forth in the application justify granting of the variance, variance is the minimum which would make possible a reasonable use of the property, that the granting of the variance will be in harmony with the general purpose of this ordinance and will not be injurious to the surrounding properties, neighborhood, or the city, and will not be contrary to the most current comp plan, uh, and that there is practical difficulty or unnecessary hardships in use of the property if the strength and application of the regulations are carried out.
There is not, the property has been used for years as it is. They want to change the property. We fully realize that 10 feet wouldn't allow them to do, do what they wanted to do. But that was as far as we was willing to go, as far as, uh, increasing non-conformity.
Yeah.
There's, I have no problem with any, any property out there with 10 feet, just for example, they're non-conforming. Uh, basically, what he is, what he has is a large R1 lot, if you would. The problem originates because of they set their houses off to the side, I assume, so they could get their septic systems on the side.
Yep, so it looks like you're could be for any number of reasons, a person can speculate, but
Yeah.
The house is offset to the side.
And, and that was, was that when they originally built the house? When that, how many years had it been on the house?
It's been in it for about two and a half years.
Two and a half? Yeah.
There's a note here that it was annexed back in 2005? Did, am I reading that correctly?
Probably.
Right around that timeframe?
Yeah, that was only the little issues with some of the other surrounding municipalities.
So, this is a little different than the last variance application, because the lot is non-conforming, right? And due to no fault of their own, it is creating a little bit of a situation. I'm just, my biggest concern is safety here, um. How do we make sure that we can get to you if we add on to that? I'm, I'm kind of feeling the same thing Russ is feeling, but I don't really care to go less than 10 feet. I see a couple other properties here that are pretty close. I don't know, what does everyone else think? It's a beautiful addition, I mean, I'm looking at the plans here.
The location of the closest house is further than that 10 feet, is that right? Is there any obstruction really? Oh, 30. In the garage, in the property line, it's about 30 feet. Okay. So, when we get our, that's after our additions on, it's probably at least 30 feet properties. Is there any obstruction between the, the trees or anything like that? Don't think there is not, if you came up with a driveway and drove straight in between the garages, you could make it behind houses. There's no way a fire, I mean, you wouldn't drive a fire truck back there, right? No. They could if they want. Yeah, if you wanted to.
How would you, how would you service that location, Steve? Can you provide me just a little bit of insight?
What we would do is we would stage from the road. It's, um, the map that the gentleman here showed me, is that on this, on the long part of that map? So. Right inside. There's a road right there, where you see the drive
I just
to the stage from in front of the house, and then drag hoses. It'd be like, just almost every other house in the community. And I'm not about to drive in there and bury an injury. Sorry.
That's what I'm asking.
No.
Because we gotta understand, for safety reasons, I mean, this is a, a special request, and we've, we've had some concerns.
Well, I'm gonna make it now, because we have a lot of houses, we only have five, 10 feet between houses, and it's drag hoses. So, from a fire safety point of view, that does not, I'm just from looking at the big picture.
Yeah.
Now, if he's putting a whole bunch of firecrackers in there and gunpowder and, you know, that kind of stuff, that's another conversation.
If you do that, call me, I'll come hang out with at your house. No, um, this is a very different perspective, um.
I think that, um, you know, where Russ is coming from with the 10 feet, it's kind of about setting a precedence. So, you know, if we're, if we're going below 10 feet, we have to kind of do that for everybody, I think. I mean, I like to look at it like how you're gonna move forward with the next person that wants to do this, I mean, what is, where is the seven foot coming from? Is, what is our minimum? You know, what are we willing to go down to?
If I may, the alternative that other neighbors have pursued, which we really can't on this spot, was to, that's rebuilding, those are closer. Um, there are several on the site that you can zoom out, I didn't even dimension those on here, because it's sort of a separate issue, but there are accessible in that, garages, in that 10 feet. Some may be perhaps as close to 5 feet. There are just a wide variety, this doesn't look like this has ever been, um, I think, in regulation, anyone, right from yet. So, um, when I did the research on what the setbacks were, purpose of, number, listen, is non-conforming. So, you know, this is, I, I sort of, and don't want to set a precedent, but this is fix something that I guess mistake was made.
You're trying to fix something? What, what is the purpose of the third stall?
The third stall? Well, the fix is that there is really no realistic way to do any kind of accessory building. So, in terms of what is allowed for in the neighborhood, we can't really accomplish that.
I would agree with that, I'm looking at all these buildings, and I know that at the time that I built my home, which my lot is very close to the size of these lots, I was told that my accessory buildings need to be five feet off the property line, which is probably what I'm seeing for most of the shaded areas here, as far as accessory buildings. And I, I know people that live in this development, they're, uh, it's a wonderful, wonderful neighborhood, and, um, it is that the entire development is non-conforming.
So, if they're gonna do have three stalls on their houses.
If I may add to, Judge Johnson, I'm the neighbor to them. If you didn't see, and you can't see, any type of, uh, dotted line anywhere the property starts to stop, nobody know the difference. There's plain space between both our homes, so it wouldn't feel like it's a crime here. And my wife and I don't, aren't concerned with their addition.
As a neighbor, a direct neighbor, you have no concerns. Thank you.
So, Russ, when you guys went from, you know, bringing it out to 10 feet, was it just basically more to be the consistency that we were talking about?
Yep. We we use the word precedent a lot. Uh, because we have to treat everybody the same. Agreed, and he's right about accessory buildings, uh, currently can be five feet off the line, uh, they have to also be in back. Yes.
Yeah, the reason I'm picking your brain is so that everybody up here understands where you came from, when you guys came up with your four-year decision on that. Want to make sure, so we're all in the same, so appreciate that.
We you probably realized from the past that there's very few variances that we think meet all the criteria for
I know.
being, being done.
Correct.
And there's things I'd like to do on my property that I don't get to do either.
All right, any other questions?
Just a quick question, um, to Miles and Mr. Johnson, have you guys talked about the possibility of you just buying that three feet, um, edge of the property, just to avoid having to get the variance? We haven't, um, no, the commission property didn't do that, and they favor of it. Just, uh
At, at buying the three feet, they still would need to apply for a variance, but what that would do would be in compliance with the planning and zoning commission's recommendation. In order to not need variance, we have to be at 25 feet, which the way this house is situated is impossible.
What's that compared to the new ordinance? Side yard?
Oh.
Same.
25?
It'd be 25. The categories are so much different.
Right, well, what the new ordinance does is it takes a lot of the rural districts and combines them into one large rural district, so it's kind of one size fits all now for the more rural ones, the less popular, the ones that you don't see that often. And if I remember right, it's still similar, I'm out of internet, so I'm gonna rely on someone else to pull the link up if possible, but, um.
Well, and maybe we need to evaluate that.
Right, and maybe it's looking at the zoning as a, a larger scale, because this isn't just a issue with this parcel, it's some of the other ones.
It, it looks like a good majority of the homes here are non-compliant, non-conforming, I guess, if you want to call it that.
My guess is most, if not all
Yeah.
are non-conforming lots, which is fine, wonderful, they can stay that way, our problem is increasing the non, the non-conforming, which is what we have difficulty doing. Now, having said that, 10 feet isn't really useful, but 10 feet is, uh, next closest lot to this, lot in our current system would be an R1, which is 15,000 square feet, if I recall. Uh, but that has 10 foot, R2 has 10 foot, R3 has 10 foot, R4 has eight, R6 has five.
It's the consistency, right?
That's why you get the big bucks.
Yeah, we'll work on that. So, when the staff was looking through this, guys, when you came up with your recommendation on these two, where did you, where did you glean some of your information from, and what was your thought process on this?
A lot of it, it's the fact that none of these parcels made it, right? They, they were, they were playing the game, and then the rules got changed halfway through, and they were told they have to continue. So, in, in that aspect, they, none of these folks did this to themselves.
Right.
Apart from maybe even random, and that's where the large majority of it came from. We also understood the neighbor didn't have an issue, so there really wasn't an immediate impact there, as well as just from an overview impact of the city, there, nothing happening on that property was gonna affect the way the city operates. Um, and that, that was kind of just high level where we're at on that.
You're not talking about the 10 foot, right? As you told, you guys took your recommendations, basically, on that.
Our recommendation was to approve as, as originally proposed, so the 7.1, and the findings that the commission adjusted to the 10, that would still recommend, but again, fully understanding whatever your decision.
That's recommended right now.
Yeah, any other discussion?
The neighbor, thanks for any of this.
George.
No, like I said previously, my biggest concern is safety and access for the fire department based on the information that I received. I'm confident that we can get the necessary equipment to this property. The fact that the neighbors here speaks volumes. Thank you, sir, for coming. Your neighbors owe you a beer. I agree on that premise. Yes.
Russ, I do, I understand where you're coming from with the
I do too.
But I'm gonna step on this one sort of thing. The original general idea is probably all right.
People need to be able to get enjoyment out of their home too. And the way this was placed on the lot, the fact that you purchased it this way, the non-conformity of the entire area is not your fault. Please be conscience, conscious and conscientious of your neighbors as you're doing construction there. If you choose to move forward and also, um, please ensure that we're doing our very best and that maybe there's some sort of a gentleman's agreement to not impede access between the properties in the event of safety. I guess that's the only thing I can ask. Um, and I can't put anything in writing. I can't make you do anything. But I'm kindly asking you to not put another structure or some sort of an accessory building there that would prevent us being, being able to get hoses back there in the event that something awful were to ever happen. We just want you guys to be safe.
Russ, just from my perspective, I would say that don't consider this to give precedence. You know that there are going to be hot circumstances that come up.
This is the first time that, that you will have voted differently. And we're just there to make recommendations to you, the guys.
But I want you to keep the scrutiny going to folk. I know you will.
This would be, I think this would be a very different situation if this were a new development and I'm going to be clear about that.
Now, this is going to sound strange. If you guys pass this as is, I don't feel bad.
You sure?
I don't. I, I literally don't feel bad because it's your problem to deal with the
I know, but I'm not razzing you there. I'm just trying to make sure you understand where I'm coming from.
I understand.
I'm, I'm willing to go with the original.
Yeah, I am too.
But we're taking Russ's committee's guidance here as well, so. All right. With that, somebody want to come up with a motion then, or?
We'll make that motion.
No, hold on. I better close the public hearing here.
I'm going to tell you after.
Good. All right. Go ahead.
Good, Lucas?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, variance request for sixty-eight and fifty-one.
Okay. Jeff makes a motion. We'll give a second.
I have a second.
Oops.
Yeah, who does a second? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who cares? All right. Go on to number 11.
Thank you for coming.
Jim, I'm assuming you've got that.
There are things you can do that you can't.
Understood. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make, I want you to keep being the scrutinizing person.
But you can do things that are really dangerous.
I know. So I appreciate that.
I can't.
All right, Jim, what do we got?
All right. Uh, the bid opening for water sewer storm and street improvement district number 2022-2, loss of the seventh edition was last Thursday, April 28th. Received bids from three contractors, Dakota Underground, KPH and Celine Brothers. Uh, the apparent bidder was Dakota Underground, a hardwood space bid of $2,973,756.79. That was a little bit over the interest years. That's sort of $2,609,500 with contingencies. Uh, the next lowest bid was $3,365,223.70. So, um, considering that the, um, bidding environment, a couple hundred thousand dollars over isn't really a surprise to me. Be nicer, it's a little closer, but that's where it came in at. So Dakota Underground has performed well for projects for city in the past, performed well. So, um, my recommendation would be to use the board project as a word to Dakota Underground.
Yeah. So when you guys, just for clarity sake, Jim, have you guys did your estimate along the goal of that?
So this asset was provided by design engineer and it was based towards the end of 2021. I did ask them prior to the bid opening if there was a revise and she was asking just knowing what the prices have been doing in the last couple of months. And they didn't have one at that time, so.
That's why I'm asking because I know.
I'm seeing November 23rd, 2021 here I'm looking at. A lot has changed since then. A lot has changed since then. And we're still
I'm not too worried about the increase. I thought it'd be more, to be honest, if you looked at it a little bit, it would probably be about 3.4. So. All right. Anybody got any questions on the bids?
I will make a motion to
Did you use letter credit again? Do you have how many days? For 30 days?
We, we can Yeah. It's getting less.
Okay, so it'd be contingent upon the order credit then.
I spoke with the developer just before the meeting here and they said that they were working on getting letter credit. They thought they'd have it to us today. But we have not seen it yet.
Yeah.
So if you were to make a motion of award, or just have a contingency upon, award upon receipt of letter of credit or valid letter of credit.
On receipt of valid letter of credit.
Right.
All right, I'll make that motion then to, um, prove the bid to the letters.
To go down the ground.
Dakota Underground. Um, contingent upon the letter of credit from the developer.
Let me make some motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. All right, 12. Jim, I'm guessing you got that one too.
Uh, the bid opening for sanitary sewer improvement district number 2021-4, which is location SA4P, which does the service, the Lakeview addition and Cub Creek. Second addition, kind of that North Wall Avenue, west of, or east of Conny Road 17, North, no, East corner of the four-way stop. Uh, was Thursday, April 28th, 2022. City received bids from five contractors, John's Refrigeration Electric, Celine Brothers, KPH Incorporated, CC Steel LLC and Dakota Underground. This project broke up in two different, three different contracts. One was a combined general electrical. One was a general, general work and then the last one was an electrical work. Uh, the city received, uh, one, two, three, four, five. Three bids for the combined general electrical work with the low bid of Dakota Underground of $727,745.10. Interest years, that was $915,000 contingencies. Contract number two, which was a general work, the low bidder was Dakota Underground, it's $654,525.10. And the last was electrical where there was only, the low bid was from the KPH of $92,500. In order to get the, if you were to compare against contract number one, you have to add two and three together. Two and three are higher than number one, so the recommendation would be to work, be complete the contract number one, combine general electrical work to Dakota Underground and the amount of $727,745.10. Like I said, the previous, that Dakota Underground has worked for the city of Forest and performed well too, so. Uh, this is adjacent to the Lakeview addition. Dakota Underground still has work under contract here, that Lakeview addition that's completed by the end of July. So they have equipment in the area and they will be working that area. Starting here, they started today on some punchless stuff for Lakeview. This one did come in a little bit under assessment. Like I said, we are, it was about $915,000. There was a little bit more of a spread on this one. Dakota Underground, the low bid was $727,000 and the high was 1.2, so. Um, then KPH dropped out the middle at $922,000.
Are you confident that they're not missing anything?
That was all I talked to them. They thought they lost a bit. They thought that, that KPH was red lower than them. They were pretty excited about that. I had a lot of phone calls, so I told them that they were the low bid. They're fine with it. They got the equipment right there. They got everything.
What is the completion date on this particular project?
So there's an interim completion date on this one to get controls and pumps. And they, I think it's September, middle of September, then they fight on completion in September.
Can they hit those dates?
They indicated they could on the bidding document. So that's all we have to go off right now. We haven't had a pre-con. We haven't had any of that.
Okay.
It's all us.
Okay. Any other questions? Recommend, and then we go with the recommendations.
Yeah, I have no issues with that, provided that they can make the dates as stipulated, which they've indicated on their bid. That being said, um, we have letter of credit and all that stuff on this one. It's the city, that's right. We don't need letter of credit on this one.
Regional projects.
Regional. So, um, I'll go ahead and make the motion to award the project for the combined bid to Dakota.
Okay. Chelsea, give us a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who cares? Jim, you're busy. You got 13 too?
So what you have before you is a engineering services agreement for water sewers, storm and street improvement district number 2023-8, which is 66th Street. As you called for last meeting, you determined there was insufficient protests and authorized that document forward. Our standard engineering agreement based on the percentage of the cost, that's proposed construction cost or based on the percentage of construction cost, uh, exact same agreement that we had multiple times before, and we just changed the, the percentage stays the same, it's just estimated total project cost changes based on that. So this one has an engineer report, hourly not to exceed 5,000, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water distribution. Study reports. And a design services of 4.8% of the construction, which is what $17,000. Electrical engineering is 8% of electrical item, that's the 700 for us, right away easement acquisition, $10,000. All these are all hourly not to exceed, the construction is based on 8%. That's typically what we've been able to do before in the past, plus than the standard rate based on the rate table, but what we do for
Are you confident that we can obtain the right of way and easement acquisition for this project?
Yes. This one, this one, we shouldn't have any trouble.
Okay.
Because we've got the 100, 100 feet right away through most of it. Like, we have to do some little bit of working on, uh, down by the Almond addition and down Brandon is, but.
You're going to have to ask me for one, aren't you?
We're going to have to ask me for something, yeah.
You sure you're confident, Joe?
You're going to be one of those?
I'm going to be one of those. Oh. That's good. All right.
Okay. Questions, concerns?
No, I don't have any questions or concerns. This is a standard agreement that we've seen in the past.
Pretty much, yeah.
I'll make them up and show proof.
Okay. Chelsea makes a motion. Can I get a second? I have a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. 14. Jim, I'm guessing you're on that one too.
All right. So, um, at the last meeting, we discussed sanitary sewers, 296 Dakota Avenue. At that time, I presented you with a preliminary estimate that I had prepared of approximately $29,000, just as a starter placeholder to get, to start the discussion on extending sewer to that. I did reach out to KPH, who does have projects in that area this summer and, uh, they came back with a cost of $22,600. You can see in the memo, this is their, their cost breakdown. I was happy I was as close as I was, to be perfectly honest, on a small project like that.
I was going to say, good lord. You could spit and hit that one.
So, uh, the next thing is, is what do you want to do with that? We had just the estimate last time. We have a number now. We have a contractor that's working in the area. And as we talked about in the last meeting is cost shares, that a project is done, the special sets. However, you guys as a city council, I do go forward with this, or not go forward with it, or like
This is some sins of the past that I really think need to get fixed. I think that's grief.
I agree with that. Is there a way that we can add this to the existing ongoing project?
I would assume that they would do it at the bottom at the same time. That's why we reached out to this.
So we can't actually add it to the contract? It'd have to be a separate.
It was water versus sewer. Yeah, the other project is not in the same, it's not in the same, um, same, uh, funding. Plus that has SRA.
That has SRA funding on it.
So it'd be cleaner if we did it just separately and do it. And that's the way I set it up, was just come in and do it. The one thing that we could talk about would be the pavement removal, pavement replacement. They did do some water rework in that area, which grinds up the, yes, the pavement. To be able to go away, that's on the pavement replacement. So you can see the replacement is pretty, pretty expensive. $50 a square yard adds up pretty. Treatment is a whole base commodity.
It's a commodity.
I know. And the price just keeps going up and up and up. I'd like to see this get completed and I'd like to see it done at the same time as the other work because I don't want to pay two separate mobilizations. So I think, um,
Should be able to coordinate that.
I, I think if we move forward with this in a fairly timely fashion, we should be able to make that happen. It'd be so convenient if we could put it in with something else, but if we can't, we can't, I guess.
I think we're doing pretty good with somebody who's here to work with.
Say again?
I think, I said, I think it's, it's working well to have somebody that's here doing projects with the equipment.
Right. Like you said, you're thinking Marshall right over there.
Yeah, it's not like having to truck it in from the yard somewhere, like or walk down the street.
See if they'd be willing to work with us on that replacement and I have no issue with this. This pricing is fair.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they could do that before we start repairing the road.
It really would, because I hate that.
That's all done at one.
But now we're not processing with that one. My landowner there was hitting it down for that.
Yep.
Pavement removal, bit of replacement is always a really expensive cost, so if you can bundle that.
It is. And also if we can eliminate the, you know, cutting and patching, we eliminate all of what we're dealing with in a couple other areas of the city, which I would like to see go away. So, yeah, let's, um, I have no issue with this. I'll make a motion to, go ahead.
Oh, question? Yeah.
Um, I'm going building on the property via Peterson. And I was just wondering, since we're, we're building this spring, whenever this obviously can be done, we have to also then dig it up the road to tie into the sewer?
So this brings it to a right of, to the right of way, just like it would be in any use of the
Okay, so we won't have to dig it up?
No, this should bring it to a curb stop, right? On your property and then you take it from there?
Not a curb stop, but it's
What is it?
Usually it's a lot, a clean out.
Okay.
At that point, but we're not doing that with this one. We're just bringing the pipe out, mark it, they can start there, they can go to the house.
Okay.
So it would be no different than a new something.
And they're already paying for it, so.
I'm sorry? Who's they?
Include them on the per district.
We have to fix that.
Well, it's fixed as soon as this gets done.
Yeah. It needs to be corrected because that should never have happened. Um.
All right. Somebody want to make a motion then to, uh, not to exceed is what we should probably do, Jim, or what do you want?
I would say that you accept it and then it's based on estimated quantities. That's why I have it there. So it could go down. Shouldn't go up, but just think that we accept that you just accept the quote of KPH and this mountain.
Okay.
Authorize them to proceed with the work, kind of a thing, just to make sure they can be going on it sooner or later.
All right. Somebody want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make that motion to go ahead and accept the bid received from KPH for 296 Dakota Avenue sanitary sewer work. And to, uh, what do we need to do for the session part of it? We're paying for it.
We're just paying.
Yes.
So the question I would have for council is, my perspective would be, would you like the sewer fund to cover this? Would you like the sales tax fund? Or either one, our sewer fund, that's a fund that could cover it, or we could do it through sales tax.
Say that we should probably do it through the sewer fund.
I agree with that. It's allocated as a sewer project, so that those funds should be utilized accordingly.
Did we get the full motion out there? Right. Yep. All right. Who's got a second on that? Jeff does a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Chelsea abstains, although it was motion carries. Yeah, me too. Brett, you want me to roll call these?
It was all, yeah.
Cause he didn't, so we had it down.
With the exception of Chelsea, she abstained, right? Got it, okay. Um, on to the next one, Lucas, you're actually up to bat here.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. Last year.
Yes, it was.
I know exactly who this was.
Last year, the mayor wanted a jake break ordinance here. I don't know why it took me nine months to draft this, but.
Some people's lawyers, I tell you.
Yes.
A very tough ordinance.
So what we did, though, was, is section thirteen fifteen oh four is references brakes, um, on, on vehicles.
Right.
So he's added the point one, to just say that there's, uh, no jake breaks allowed, uh, in the city. Uh, any violation of this just falls under the city standard, uh, violation of chapter thirteen dash fifteen. Which is.
It'll elude you until we're done here.
Thirteen dash fifteen two eight.
Well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any person violating any, uh, provision of this chapter, for which a specific county is not provided, must be assessed a fee of twenty dollars.
Yeah, we might have to look at that again, but, uh.
Well, it's, it's either look at that again now, or if you want to put something in here, you can, but.
It overrides that.
Cause it would be then a specific dollar amount that's provided, but.
It's a normal dollar.
For consistency for the sheriff's department, they'd probably be happy if it just been twenty dollars, so I'm assuming that's what most of their tickets are for now. Yeah, I also don't know how often they're going to be. Yeah.
I know for sure.
The issue is, we got a lot of construction traffic coming with the diversion and with a lot of the building here, and we've got people that live on the corner, specifically Merle. Living down the corner down here on one hundredth, right, and every time those trucks come up to that intersection, they hit them brakes, and it's all hours of the day and night, and that park guy can't sleep. So along with this, we need some signage, and twenty dollars isn't enough of a deterrent. I'm not gonna quit using my jake brake on my trucks for twenty bucks, right? So, I mean, if you want to leave it at twenty bucks to start with, that's fine, but I'm gonna tell you straight up, if, uh, you got all kinds of trucks coming through here, and all they gets twenty dollar ticket, they're gonna laugh. I mean, it costs us more to pay the sheriff to stop those guys than it does to write out the damn ticket.
So, yeah, go ahead there, Russ.
On the corner of one hundredth, uh, eighty percent of the noise is because the trucks are coming across the rumble strips.
I don't disagree with that.
That's what sounds like a jake break at that corner.
I don't disagree, but when you got heavy loads, especially farm loads and stuff, some of, I mean, I have a jake brake on my pickup truck, you know? If I'm going down a hill and I'm fully loaded with trailer, I can throw that thing on.
This is for semi, semi tractors.
I get it. So you're saying I can still use mine?
Yeah, yeah, right, no.
And Lucas, is there, if, if you look at the other. The other municipalities around here, I mean, like in Los Fargo and Fargo, do they have, I mean, is their fine higher than twenty dollars?
I don't know about the fine, but I know there's signage.
I know, it's signage, yeah.
There's signage, they. They get more complex at theirs where they're actually trying to measure noise.
They have decibel guns to.
Depend the equipment, nor that power to do that, so I try to keep it just as basic as. The way it's drafted.
Alright, so what I'm thinking here, so we don't sit here all night discussing this. I'd say we need to get the signage up.
Yep.
That's probably a paramount thing here, um, we could do some more investigation into that as, as the fine.
So the signage, the two areas that we'd be looking at, most likely to have this would be, uh, Long County Road fourteen coming in for the city. And then County Road seventeen from south going northbound. However, those are both county roads, so we'd have to coordinate with the county, and so we'd be coordinating with them, and then also once the ordinance is actually in place and effective. That's when we could get those, but then, so just like, you know, the areas we were planning on it, uh, traffic is already slowed down quite a bit on the north end of town.
Yeah.
And they're at the.
And I'm not too concerned.
But again, the city limits, so.
Yeah, we'll have to pay attention on sixty fourth avenue, when that construction gets going along there, just to make sure that that's not going up. It shouldn't, but let's just pay attention.
Yep, but if we have any other problem areas that we can do that with.
Yep.
Uh, then we could, you know, then we could see how often we actually have tickets issued for this issue.
Right.
And if we're fine, it's not being effective, then my suggestion for you would be that we can revisit.
Yeah.
Change that P. It's the base, a lot of times based to turn this if there's a sign, so.
That's I figure, get that started after we get done with the second reading and all that, but. So, okay, any other questions or concerns?
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the first reading.
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading.
Okay, can I get a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Everybody, motion passed. On sixteen, the, Jim, I suppose you got that one.
As you may recall, we discussed this a little bit in the last city council meeting. Getting extended Catholic Church owns on the left side of sixty thirty, I think it was all seventeen. Part of that, with that project, the northmost access to Casey's gets relocated to Saint Benedict Avenue. Um, we've been in discussions, or our state office has been in discussions with the, the, with the Mr. Richard LeBeau, and he is the, um. I thought he's the one in charge of the, of the, uh, land, Casey's doesn't own this. Land stores on, they just operated, apparently. So being that that access is being taken out, and another one is being added on, in addition, one is being added on Saint Benedict Avenue. They came back and would like. To have the city connect where the driveway ends and their concrete ends. Typically driveways approaches are constructed for the right of way, and then beyond that is private, that's on to the landowner to do it themselves. So they're wanting to compromise, and since they're losing that access off of County Road seventeen. They are proposing that the. Okay, the owner tenant take care of all costs of connecting a water and sewer from the street, so as part of Saint Benedict Avenue, water and sewer be extended up. Cause right now, they have a little station that goes over to school. Don't know how the water gets there. We're not sure how the sewer gets there either, they, there was some dye testing done, and all indication is it goes over to by the school. Around the store and back, which is kind of ugly.
This is the little station behind Casey's?
Yeah, it's private, their own. So as part of Saint Benedict Avenue, we have water mains and sewer mains. We would bring services out there, typical bring it to the, bring it to the right of way line, so. Knowing that, the owner and the tenant of the store will take care of all costs of connecting to the water and sewer from the street right of way. They're proposing the city provide a driveway connection from the proposed Saint Benedict Avenue access drive to the existing concrete parking lot. Engineer working on the project says it's about three hundred and forty square yards of eight inch concrete, eighty dollars a yard, it's roughly twenty, eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. And he said we doesn't expect that we'd have to use eight inch, but they were gonna talk with Casey's about what their trucks are. He has been working with them, and that's how the geometry comes out of this intersection, is with their turning movements, for what they get for deliveries, as far as box trucks and, and transports, so.
Are we, we're leaving that other entrance, right?
The one on the south is a mistake, and the one on the north would be the whole bay, come off, come off the same thing again. So. What they're, like I said, what they're asking for is they would take care of the water and sewer on their private side, but they would like that connection, as you can see there, you know, right here. They would like this connection, which is currently crushed concrete. And then this is, this line right here is the concrete that goes out to their driveway.
So there, wait a minute, so normally, just let me make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Under normal circumstances, you said that we take things to the right of way.
Yep.
Correct?
Yep, which would be this line right here.
Yep, so what benefit is it to Austin? I mean, to them, clearly there's a benefit, but I mean, why would we go beyond that?
Cause they're taking away this access point for them, is the way that I understand it, since that was going away, which is a flat and aggressive egress.
And that access point is gravel anyway, right?
Concrete.
It's concrete?
Yep.
So we're taking away that concrete for this road, so they're proposing that we in turn put this concrete over here?
Just a driveway, yeah, and then this would also. This would all stay, I would almost like to suggest that this be grass. Kind of a boulevard bumper. It can. Could be part of it.
Cause I'm just wondering about traffic congestion right there, uh, if you don't really.
Is right here.
There is no middle divider for people to cross to.
It definitely looks nuts.
Yeah.
It is kind of a free for all, trying to get back up to that approach, back to County Road seventeen.
This one here?
Yes. If you, if you don't have that as grass where you had your, your moss crystal right there.
This, so this is all gonna be high back there, this won't be, will be driven over. You're gonna have to use this driveway right here, channeling our, channeling the traffic.
I love the idea of getting the trucks off of seventeen, because that's a major pain in the butt right now, when people, or especially big box trucks, like. The pizza truck and whatnot are sitting there trying to turn into Casey's, they can't make a left, and everybody lines up there, right? So it makes sense to get that off the main thoroughfare and off to the side. So you're saying that that area that you just mentioned, or proposed as grass, is gonna be a high area?
Well, no, it's just that this curve, you won't be able to drive over this curve. This is all gonna be curbed here.
The, the diesel pumps on Casey's station are on that side.
Yep, they are over here, they're right here.
Turn to try to get in there, um, or to get out. I'm just trying to think of how people get away from that diesel pump.
Most trucks, most large trucks are not getting their diesel there.
I'll, I'll agree, like, large, large trucks, but I'm gonna say any truck with a trailer of any size.
Yeah.
Is not gonna be able to turn towards the pumps, they usually turn to the right to try to get back out to the main road.
And honestly, we don't want to be stupid about turn radiuses for those types of trucks either, because I know what it's like to pull a large trailer with a piece of equipment on it and try to turn around, and it's a pain in the butt.
There's gonna be people parked up here, at a building, right?
So we are working with Casey's, we are, if it's something we, you think we should look at some more with them.
It's just something that needs to be brought to, I'm sure this person's attention, because maybe they don't realize that, that. Anyway, that's using the diesel pumps on that end of the station, needs a way to exit the gas station.
Yeah, and there's, and there's nothing that says we can't analyze that, I, I don't know if they have analyzed.
Cause they would have to make no park, and then at the end of the pumps where people park, so large vehicles.
Yeah, and honestly, I mean, if you want to, you can yellow stripe all that, and it can be an area where, you know. People can use to turn around, but you.
This might not be able to be grass, now that you say that.
Yeah, that radius would be.
You might end up needing it to come around, but that's definitely something we can look at, like I said, all these came from discussions with Casey's and attorney movements of what the semis are. So I guess the question I have for you is number one, do you want to entertain their offer? Do we want to counter offer with them? Um, what are, what are the, the thoughts there?
I have no problem entertaining the offer, I just want them to be sure of what they're requesting right there, cause this is somebody who may not know exactly how that gas station is set up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the local people here need to talk to the people who may not understand what the traffic flow is here.
And literally take them out there with a trailer, if necessary, so he gets it, so he can see it and understands what is going on as far as radius there.
I'm sure one of our contractors would have no problem taking a trailer out there and showing them what the turn radius.
Go over there at lunchtime, you'll have twelve trucks in there with trailers, I mean, it's real simple.
Yeah.
There's buses that pull in there every morning from the elementary school on the opposite side and park every single morning. I mean, take a school bus and try to make that radius, and that's ten times easier than anybody with a trailer, so. I think a little bit of reality needs to hit when we make this plan. I love the idea, like I said, getting the trucks off, this is a real nice way that we can get that traffic moving from the other end coming out here. It's an easy right turn, a pretty simple left turn, I mean, this isn't anything crazy. I like that we're not eliminating both entrances, but yeah, we've got to be a little smart about that side. And keep in mind, that's low, and that gets really, really wet right now, so when they do this work, make sure that it's up high enough so that it isn't underwater.
So we're kind of deviating from what we're.
I know.
To discuss.
Jim, as far as, I'm okay with all this, but I do think that they should probably, they should do a little bit more, cause, alright. Is that whole area gonna wind up being cement, you know, if you're talking about.
Right now, just the shaded areas, all that they want.
Okay.
Us to pay for.
Yes.
That's what we're talking about, like, not really necessarily the design, but are we going to pay for the concrete?
I guess I don't really have a problem with that, cause I know we are taking that away from that other entrance, so. There is some give and take here, I don't really have a problem with that. My concern is more, we, we do that, and we're gonna provide them access, but are we providing efficient access? Based upon what we're already been talking about here. Is something else, you know, you got that berm curving in there like that? Is that gonna work? Cause you're gonna have to take a radius, and you're gonna have to swing that thing back to straighten it out, to go out that entrance if you have a long trailer, you know what I'm getting at?
Yep, so like I said, this came from.
Yep, no, I know.
Did they have a design engineer do this, or is this just pencil and paper?
So their, their development store development manager is an engineer, and he's been working with our engineers.
Okay.
Like I said, I got no problem with this, so I want to make sure that we're talking apples and apples here.
But we're not, we're not approving the design concept, it's just concrete.
Will you fill the gap in, we're sitting behind with your, your, so.
But the design will come to us later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be similar with this.
Design for the road, the overall design of Casey's site will be for Casey's to decide, their site. It's their property, their site.
So why are we?
He's just asking what the great end area is, what council.
And then, can I ask a question then, why, why are we discussing how they're gonna do their turnarounds and?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to know, cause I was under the impression that we had some input in this, if we don't, then.
You, you do, you do, I'm just saying. Typically, they get what's in the dark line here. They're asking for a connection back here on their private property, because this is going away.
Yeah.
So the question that before you tonight is, do you, are you willing to pay for this additional? To connect existing concrete with the new concrete for my driveway for him?
Well, I perceive that as one for one, but I'm not gonna pay for something that's gonna be stupid. It needs to be the right design.
I don't think I'm in the position to tell Casey's engineer that they're wrong.
They're bringing us that slab, but is that gonna be the final draw, so that's what I'm getting at with this, when we're talking about this whole thing, is that actually going to be it? Or are they gonna wind up changing that, because they start realizing a traffic pattern here, and that berm is gonna go out, and they're gonna want us to pay.
So that's something that we will look at some more.
Okay.
This is our discussion, I understand it completely.
Okay.
What happens between this shape here, is right now it's crushed concrete and a swamp, basically.
Yeah.
So if you can get a truck of whatever size they use to design their stations for, in here and turn on this. They're happy with that?
What, to your original question? Yeah, if that's the chunk, take to offset that, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I, but I don't want, if we, people beyond that.
Okay, that's what, I don't want that to go beyond that, though. Okay, that's what, I don't want that to go beyond that, though. So you're going, you, you are in favor of it as presented? Provided Casey's is all right.
That truck.
Yes, 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 as presented. Three hundred and forty square yard.
Do we want to take more contingent button, getting us some butter drawings of showing the trucks turning around?
We don't have a say in that, it's their.
Well, we do if we say we're not gonna pay it, if they're not gonna.
It's their.
If, if a truck can't turn around, Casey's property.
That's their fault, I guess.
Casey's would have challenges with having customers over there. And they would be up to the business to respond.
I agree, it's their issue, not ours, ours is just to handle what that cement is.
Yep, I'll look for motion or somebody's making more questions on, uh.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Sarah, it's my one. No, she's gotta keep his look at this.
I don't, I don't like it, I mean, it has nothing to do, it's just, I, I think it's a dumb design.
Agree.
And I think that if, I mean.
You wanna pay for concrete or not?
This, that's the thing, I'm not gonna pay for it if it's not gonna be conducive to our entire community, so I mean.
But it's really just, it's that chunk and no more, so if they screw up their. Driveway, that's their, that's them, and then they can pay for it to be fixed.
It, it all comes back to us, and this is the thing that everyone needs to understand, is that when someone does something stupid. Regardless of whether it's functional or not, it always comes back to us, right? So we have to care, no matter what.
Cause I will say, I'm gonna direct you to the Casey's gas station, who designed their driveway. That's what I'm gonna say to the constituents who ask me, why the hell the driveway is like that, because it's not a city road. It's private property.
Okay, so what happens when you got a bunch of trucks in there that take out that whole curb on the city road? And we're told that we need to pay for it, and I gotta pay for it twice now.
All of this, do we have any other gas stations in?
We're gonna be stuck with this one for a while. Well, I mean, I guess if there's.
Do what you want, I'm clearly outnumbered here, I just, I don't wanna pay for it twice, because their engineer doesn't get his butt down here and look at it. And make sure that it's right, and that it's gonna do what it's gonna do. Do we have anything to say in this design? Nope, if this is all just about paying for a small chunk of concrete to replace the one that we're taking for the road, fair is fair.
Well, we can say, we can pay for it or not pay for it, depending on if we, like, agree with what their design is.
That's what I'd like to do, I'd like to say, I have no problem paying for it, provided that we have some input in the final design. Because the way it's designed right now, every truck that I know of is gonna hop that curb. And it's gonna create nothing but damage and cracking and a low spot and problems, and. I don't feel like dealing with it.
Can't they just put some cars on the plant so we can see what they learn? I mean, it's hard to even proportion how this is without seeing vehicles to scale on them, you know?
I mean, to me, that little tiny square is the canopy. So to me, if we don't have grass there and it's a road, I mean, I'm, you're right, I can't see. Angles very well, and it'd be really nice to see a truck and trailer. But I'm looking at that little tiny square that's a canopy, and then I'm looking at all of the space, and I'm not a truck driver.
Actually, it might work better than we're thinking, it's hard to tell for.
In, in order for the timing to work, I think Jim has concerns, concerns on timing. If you say, if the council is to have a motion to. If, if you're okay with the three hundred and forty square yards, then ask them to.
Double check.
Show the site.
Show their plan?
Show the overall final plan, what they planned to execute beforehand for council input. We could ask that, that way we could still move forward on this and then add the ability to adjust. And then their state can work with their engineer to see. It, it expressed the concerns from the council.
The only thing that we have to be concerned about is making sure we're not paying for that curb and gutter twice. I don't care how they do it, it's private property, they can do whatever the hell they want on their own property. But I'm not paying for that curb and gutter twice, I'm not using taxpayer dollars to fix something, because this design is inadequate. It's my personal opinion.
I mean, I agree, I don't wanna be paying for a better, because trucks are running into it, but. I, it's hard for me, because I'm seeing a little tiny canopy, and then I'm seeing this humongous space. So, yeah, it would be nice to see their finalized plan, I guess, but I don't wanna tell them how to do their driveway.
That's sufficient, Jim?
And Russ, you gotta take a peek at this too when it comes through, don't you?
Oh, a bit.
Yeah, even a bit.
Not even a, not even a bit, and you guys, and you guys aren't qualified for it.
Hey, wanna take it easily?
I can turn a, I can turn a forty-eight or fifty-three foot truck tighter than you can turn, turn your pickup pulling a trailer.
You probably can, Russ, and good for you, but the majority of the population can't freaking do that.
No, I'm saying, fixing something are easier for a semi. Because of a shorter turning radius.
Yeah.
Then, then you're.
Russ, I understand that, and I've driven semi truck, I've driven beat truck, I've driven all kinds of stuff, and I know what it takes to turn a truck around, and that ain't it. And I'm not an engineer, I'm not a professional, but I'm gonna tell you right now, what's gonna happen there, because.
They're not gonna fill that in, that, that grass, that's not gonna be grass.
I hope it's not grass.
But we're, but we're not gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying, I just want a little bit of common sense used when they put this thing together, because it looks like some people just connected some lines on that driveway.
That's all they did.
That's all they did.
Agreed, you come up to the end of the right way, you connect it with the existing, so I don't speak that one bit, then you connect the driveway with. There's the store, you connect what's there with what's gonna be there.
I just want a little thought put into it, cause it's a swamp, and it's really soft. Not only do you have the concerns about turn radius, but you have the concerns about burying the truck. And you know what it's like to try to get equipment in there to take a truck out, if you don't have consistent gravel and whatnot in a place where it needs to be, so.
Alright, so. So we're gonna get back to, we're gonna pay for that little gray square.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's consider ourselves about that. Casey's is still gonna be private property, they're gonna put up what they're gonna put up if their stuff gets wrecked.
But what if they wreck our curb?
Then that's something we're gonna have to address with them.
Uh, I, if it's this design, I want some sort of a variance, I want something that says that we're not gonna have to fix it.
Can you put that in for us, Jim? A little statewide clause?
Never seen a semi not travel over a curb.
Give us all a more fun.
Yeah, no, it's gonna happen.
You can only design for so much.
Yep.
You can only design for so many circumstances, and I'm trying to find the turning movement, I have the turning movement. With tires on it and everything, but I can't find it right now.
But doable, if you remember the, your markings are doable.
Yeah.
Alright. I'm gonna say, let's focus back on the gray area.
I, um.
Go ahead, make your motion.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, agree to the. Paving of that little portion right there, what does that say, three hundred and?
Forty square yards.
Three hundred and forty square yards.
Like I said, it is just two lines connecting, might be pretty tough, but it might be three hundred and fifty or something.
Okay, yep, that's, that's what I'm gonna make my motion on.
Okay, so Naomi makes a motion.
And the reason is, is because we're taking away their other driveway.
Yeah, yeah, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Fifth is a second, alright, I'll, we'll call this one just because, Sarah.
Are we making it contingent on final approval?
Sure.
We can? Yeah.
Yeah, you can add it to my.
Yes, cause it'll, yeah.
Add it to my motion, please.
Alright, so we'll start over, Sarah.
Yes.
Naomi?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yep.
Jeff?
Yes.
Motion passed, alright, right up those streets here to our.
I apologize for the small print, but it was the, get it all in one sheet here. I can read off, we have here, we're, what we're doing, what's that shit? I can read it off to you, um.
The whole thing, you're gonna read the whole thing?
Good talk, almost as quick as Jim.
Okay.
Um, what we were wanting to do is, we've been working on creating an overall CIP, this has been an ongoing project for, uh, Jim and I. And we felt it'd be important to bring the twenty twenty-two construction projects that we have. On our sheet right now to the council, so you're aware of the different ones going forward, or moving on or moving forward. Or you haven't seen yet, um, some of these projects. They get pushed to twenty twenty-three depending on some other factors, like if a development happens or not. And some different, and whatever actions council decides when you see these projects individually. To just go from the top there, sanitary sewer manhole rehab, that's basically taking selling manholes that we have through all town. Fixing them up, making sure that they're not having infiltration, I I, problems. Uh, basically, they'll go do a patching that needs to occur. And some things we may look at, they not what's needed, is sometimes they do like a liner, like you see like a truck bed liner. They do that for manholes sometimes, that's what that is, uh, we are, overall, we have that budgeted within our sewer fund right now. Uh, elements, pavement repairs, this was scheduled to happen last year, we did not fit for that one last year. We wanna get the ball moving on that, get that done, that sawing joint, sealing them. Within the development. Sanitary sewer lagoon repairs, we have some portions of the lagoon where the banks. Uh, they're starting their road, we need to get some new riprap within there, so that project would be to install riprap. Uh, compost site improvements, this would be to expand the concrete there, so we have better functionality of that site. That site is very, very popular, uh, with our residents and probably beyond. Uh, especially for dropping off tree limbs and grass clippings, uh, so. With that concrete, it would help make it clean up that site more, it's not a ton of concrete. But what we're trying to do is incrementally improve that site, and make it more functional over time. Um, like that project, Congress seventeen, eighty-first to seventy-six, that's the. T E or T A project that we're awarded federal funds for, uh, that project is scheduled to happen this year. What we have here is, the next two are a little different, we're trying to really think through future, long term for the city. This isn't saying we're going to build something right away, but it's looking at public works facility in the future. Going, hey, should we plan out, start thinking of something? And like I said, that's not saying that we're even proposing a project. We wanna make sure we think over site functionality, what we have for public works right now, and what they would need in the future. So we're looking at, that, that is what that project would be. Um, stormer master drainage plan, basically identify full laundry list of our stormwater challenges and start. Identifying projects that we could do, some may be big, some may be small. Incremental projects, or we could start addressing more of these stormwater problems, cause right now, a lot of times we're reacting to stormwater problems, not. Thinking all individual ones, saying, yep, we need to think this, and this will have a chain reaction here, here, here. Um. Compost site, lagoon slash community orchard, what this was, to be able to, what we do is pursue some. Uh, different grant opportunities for trees, uh, there's community orchard grant and some different opportunities there. We have our forestry fund, so actually the funding source would be sales tax, it'd be forestry, uh, also those trees over at that site would be. Used for screening, screen the compost site, the development to the north. Um, like I said, these are, projects are not locked in until we get approval from council, say, yep, proceed with that. But at least we come to, come through to you with the concepts more. Uh, road miscellaneous chip seal and street repairs, so it's doing street patching, uh, repairs like Coltsack at sixty-first avenue. There's, it should be sixty-first street, so in the Greyhawk subdivision, it's very young, Coltsack on the very north end. Uh, also repairs in Prairie View and Dream Fields. Um, Terragarden's first edition, mill, mill and overlay patching. Um, that would also be to put their lift on, correct? So their final lift payment in Terragarden's first edition. Sixty six, sixty-sixth, north of sixty-fourth avenue and seventies, and then to seventy-six avenue. That's one of the big projects we have been talking about, um, obviously that'll have to go through a special assessment process too. Um, we will be having a public meeting on that, layers will be going out this week. Uh, for May nineteenth from five to six thirty here at the fire hall. Like I said, we'll be sending layers out to any properties within the assessment district. Uh, chestnut ironwood improvements, that project's been discussed quite a bit, and I would have to go through the special assessment process. Uh, Bissou's industrial park paving, uh, the road is the main part of that project. This project here, sixty-fourth, ninth, Greyhawk. That project will probably have to be some discussions with council that goes in tandem with a couple down where it's road, ninth. From Salem to West Fargo to horse to sixty-fourth, that would help with connectivity when we have some. Construction going on next year, uh, when we have Congress on seventeen shut down, that could help horse quite a bit. Uh, it would, that's to West Fargo also, um. A driver for that project could be development activity happening in that area, uh, but that development has not moved forward yet. Um, Wall Avenue, we have the east portion, Congress seventeen to the bridge or Cheyenne. Then Wall Avenue Bridge over Cheyenne River to eighty-first street. And then the last one on overall projects here is, uh, sanitary sewer horseshoe band, lift station and sewer line. Uh, that project has been bid, and is basically waiting for the weather to cooperate with us. Uh, new developments we have here is concrete second edition, that one's going through the planning process, should be coming to city council in the near future. Deer Creek Estates first and second, those have already been plotted. Um, Arrowhead third edition, that one should be going up for bid very soon. Bosser seventh edition, which we discussed tonight and awarded that bid, contingent upon layer credit. Southdale fourth and fifth additions, those are up for bid right now, correct? So we'll have the bid opening soon for that, for those two, um, they were bundled together, and then Maple Lake Estates phase two. Um, those are the new developments, as of right now, we have a couple others that are. Um, we just didn't, feel it'd be best to put them on the list yet, because. We don't know where they'll be, if they're in move forward or not, um. And then I had two miscellaneous projects, there's, there are scopes. Wanted to acknowledge that, yes, they're on our radar, however, there's some different variables at play that could greatly influence the cost of them. Uh, one was this Eighth Avenue, Congress seventeen Lagoons and Nelson. Eighth Avenue to Park, uh, also referred to as Eighth Avenue Truck Road. Uh, potential development proposals may be brought to us in the future, or. That could impact the scope of that, that's why I left a vague, saying, hey, this could change quite a bit, and we haven't pushed that project yet. Uh, we did a few years ago, tried pushing that Eighth Avenue Truck Road and tabled the project at the time. Um, and then the other one is stormwater, Olden Rockville, Southwood Drive Delivery Lane, this would be just north of Arrowhead. Arrowhead Independence Park, south, south of Independence Park, uh, it's that big drainage area, big ditch there. Um, we're originally going to put a six-foot wide concrete flume to help with that drainage, however. Uh, when we're meeting out there to go through that project with the contractor. Uh, we had, very few residents expressed a lot of concern with that project. So we tabled it. We're looking at doing some lift station improvements to that to help get the, get the water out there quicker. That's the project we're looking at. So Jim has been working with contractor for that to see what can be done on that. The funding options there, where it says funding options, is just to give you a general idea of where we're talking, where we'd fund these projects through. It's not a say all. It also, I show cost estimates. Obviously, we know the climate for construction projects where costs are bouncing up and down, mainly up. So these are cost estimates I ran through recently with Jim. However, those numbers can, can change. So also I did not show any cost breakout, like cost shares as we're refining that and with our special assessment policy. To get that in place, then we'll be able to identify cost shares for the council. But we don't want to tie your hands or anybody's hands with this. This is just, like I said, we would be coming back with the projects based by, you know, individually. But I wanted to show you what we all have on our plate and what you've already, you know, some of these projects you've already seen.
So much. Questions?
No, thank you for doing that. It's very helpful to have that.
All right. Jim?
All right. Last week I was approached by the West Fargo Public Schools specifically about shared use path on the east side of current Horse Elementary. So two years ago, when the city constructed the path from north of Horse Elementary, north, the RTP grants, it's basically started on the north side of the school. As part of the remodel, in addition to the school and the expansion, the parking lot gets reconfigured on the east side of the, of the elementary. And the existing path, that's kind of path hazard, gets removed. And the school was wondering if there was any interest in continuing that path from basically Ironwood Driver Third, Third Avenue up to where the path starts right now. If there was, there would be some potential for them to do it as part of the project. Obviously, after the city funded, they could at least get it done with theirs. Otherwise, their plans call out for it to just be topsoil and seated. That's it. So I said I'd bring it up and if they, they would, if it was favorable, they would look at their contractor and see if they get some numbers, some pricing to see what it would cost to continue that sidewalk. So they're going to continue a sidewalk basically from the daycare all the way north.
So they're not going to call the minimum road that they've got there, right? That's going away, right?
That's ideal because right now where that sidewalk comes down on seventeen, it goes into the north side of the school and then comes down and then it's the drive around, you know? And you can go across the road, but the daycare, one of their driveways has been taken out now, and that sidewalk on the other side is in pretty tough shape. I mean, really bad shape. It's a matter of time before that is gone. So where that ends at that driveway north and bringing that down and connecting to the road that connects into Ironwood, I would definitely have an interest in that just for, in the interest of public safety for the kids. Because right now they have to walk on the driveway. They have to walk on the street where there's cars turning in constantly and buses. So I, I'm very interested in that. Yes, absolutely. For an elementary school, I mean, hands down.
So this would be just basically expressing the city's interest in pursuing that sidewalk on the east side of the, east side of the elementary. And then I would talk with, with the school and then they would either talk with their contractor when they're working in that area, see if they're willing to put that sidewalk in, come back to you at that time.
Obviously, yeah.
Say, it sounds like we've got a yes on that. I should tell them if you're.
Yeah, I brought this up when we were looking at their site plan and I questioned why, you know, I, because it's not our ordinance. We can't, we couldn't afford anything. I mean, I don't know why they'd want to try to keep the kids safe on their own.
Yeah, that's true.
That they weren't thinking of the children's safety now.
Budget, budget, budget issue on that.
Well, budget for kids' life, that's cool. I, I think it has, it needs to go in.
So I think you have an affirmative there, Jim, so pursue it.
Second thing I have for you is the MetroCog accepting grants for transportation alternatives program. Apparently, this is actually twenty three. I have twenty five on the agenda, but it's for twenty twenty three. As MetroCog becomes a transportation management area, TMA, a direct sub-allocation of TA funds is becoming available for MetroCog to more transportation alternative funds to projects within MetroCog's north quarter urbanized area. In addition, available TA funding amounts within said area will be higher than historically awarded. So assuming a ninety percent obligation authority, the north quarter side of the urbanized area is expected to receive a direct sub-allocation of approximately seven hundred twenty seven thousand, seven hundred twenty seven, seven hundred twenty nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars in twenty twenty three. That's a lot of, come from the speak for, there's seven hundred twenty nine thousand dollars available for urban areas in North Dakota in twenty twenty three. So as typical, the projects get submitted to MetroCog, MetroCog gets them out, and MetroCog prioritizes them, and they get funded based upon the priorities of, of the MetroCog, once they go before the TTC committee and then the DRT gets some of it, too. So.
Jim, are we classified as urban?
Yeah, we are.
We are. Okay. Just wanted to see if we moved up a notch then. Double checking.
The urbanized area doesn't actually include the entire city.
No.
But it does.
So the north half, basically from about where we are now, north.
Yeah.
Is.
That's why I was asking where that.
So where, where we've pursued, like, that's funded in the past, it would be eligible. It should be eligible.
So it's actually seventy sixth Avenue. Oh, wait, I take that back. You're right. You're right. Yep. I was looking at the wrong spot.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, here's their, their map of the urbanized area. So anyways, they've spent, they have obligated four hundred and five thousand dollars in transportation alternative funds basically of twenty twenty three, but there's approximately three hundred and twenty thousand that's still available for funding.
How much?
Three hundred and twenty thousand.
So what's the restrictions or what's the strings on it? What can we use it for?
Most of it is transportation alternatives, but just like gas.
Studies or?
No, no, no. This is for doing something. So MetroCog is seeking applications for projects that can utilize the three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So they are soliciting for any projects that you might have.
Let's give them a laundry list.
I got a list.
See what they want to do.
So right now, Horse's project is got one hundred and seventeen charities path phase three. That's got an awarded amount of two hundred thousand dollars, local match of sixty eight thousand. And then we have the Center Avenue multimodal improvements, which is a winner for those planners in the room. Yield Street. It's a yield street. And that one was funded at forty five percent grant with a sixty seven eight oh. So they are seeking projects that can utilize the predicted level of that three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So the question gets to me, what should the city of Horse submit? Have until May twenty seventh to do it. So it's kind of a quick turnaround.
No problem.
I just got it, so I'm not going to sit on it.
Well, would that sidewalk that we were just talking about qualify?
Which one is that?
The bike path.
Yeah, the school that we just talked about.
Yeah. You wouldn't, you would not be able to probably bundle it with the school's contractor.
Nope, you wouldn't be able. You'd have to do it through the state. So it, yeah, we wouldn't be able to partner with the school, but overall intentions to get the project done.
Still submit it.
That would be a strong project.
That would be a good one. I like the other bike path project. Center isn't as big, right? That's planters. That's not really transportation alternatives.
No, it is. It's, it's a, it's a way of.
It's improving safety along, from basically the fire hall area here over to senior center, improving the safety along Center Avenue.
And that's needed, too. We learned that.
The other option during weekdays, for example.
The other option that you can do is increase the federal share of your already allocated projects. So instead of it being seventy five percent of the, of the set, phase three of the shared use path, you go up to eighty percent. I think that's a good start because you might as well take two projects that they've already got awarded by the DOT, which is phase three of the shared use path north, north of the Rambo Ball Center Avenue. Those could be up to eighty percent, it says. This could include projects that you tabled shown above. Projects shown on the table can increase their federal share up to eighty percent of the total project cost if the project owners choose to apply to do so. So I think that's a good starting point, of what you've already got.
Yeah.
And.
Are you looking for more?
I don't know. New projects, it's just the paid level will exceed eighty percent. So what was your thoughts on that one by the school? I meant.
These are for twenty twenty five.
Three, twenty three. This is an allocation. I misread the thing. This is more, they're getting more money for TA and twenty three.
Yep.
Okay. So it would be able to get done faster.
Well, there's.
There's a school would do it this year.
Well, yeah, I'm wondering, can we, what about just continuing what we've already been working on and just getting the school done? I mean, we've had good success with continuing our shared use path and that needs to get done.
Continue going.
I agree. We need to continue that north all the way up to Fifty Second. Because that's just a huge.
Somewhere on our bikes. I mean, geez, going around circles. It's ridiculous.
Do we have anything on wall going east? Congress Seventeen? No, nothing.
Not, yes.
You have open ditches there. You have the open ditches though. That complicates it.
That, that is.
Using the Partridge Road and starting it before we stop and going east on the south side of the road.
Yep.
But that was just kind of thrown out there in option and then it was going north, so.
We have a whole lot of housing.
I agree. And you got a light block in nowhere in Prairie View.
It's time to look at that.
I agree. We've got a couple different places we need to look at, but if you're looking at a, a quick allocation for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, extending that path north right along a primary roadway is your golden ticket, in my opinion.
Yeah, we've talked about this a lot and we do have a lot of gaps and we just continue to go north and try to create some sort of.
So we still have the sixteenth, May sixteenth meeting where we can discuss this. Somebody who wants to volunteer to work with Jason and myself to keep it moving.
Jim, how much detail do we need to have with this initial volley? Just, do we just need to identify some areas?
Yeah. So usually it's like areas and then I think it's support. Support is always a tough thing. Letters of support. Chelsea's done a good job with that in the past, getting letters of support. That seems to go pretty far. But if we're just increasing the amount on these other two, we'd have to look at how much would be left over. We want to propose a new project on top of that. So there's a little bit of work that has to go into this and there's someone on that board that wants to volunteer to.
It would probably just be nice, even if we had some ballpark estimates on some of that stuff.
Yep.
It doesn't have to be just refined, but just some ballpark. That would be know how much we're chewing into that.
Yep.
I mean, I can.
You want else?
I don't know how, I mean, I'll just pass the time if I.
Yeah, I'll jump in. I'll jump in, too. I think all of us are willing to.
Not sitting here, too.
I mean, if, if it comes to a grant application, that's free money and we'd be stupid not to. I mean, every one of us should put our best foot forward on that. So yes, please include us all.
Yep. So we'll work with Jason and I'll work with Chelsea on keeping that, keeping that thing. We're going to get something to you for your sixteenth meetings. I have one other thing, or two other things to add. One is the water meter replace, or the water meter project, not the water meter, the be involved project. Got some not real great news today. Key contracting.
The vault that we're waiting on, those parts from Key.
So the email started off with, I know this isn't great news, but key contracting the prime contractor called Dakota Pump about their May eleventh pump delivery date.
Yep.
The pump delivery has been extended to June fifteenth. Vault delivery has been extended to September fifteenth based on the backlog. So also the suppliers have procure materials and expanded resources, furtherance of the valve. Fastest and pictures in the summary of their efforts and report information to us for a material on hand or a partial payment request. So not great news this afternoon on that be involved, but I don't really know what, what we can do. It's the way of the world right now, supply chain issues.
We've identified the, the other vendors are in the same boat.
Yeah.
And it's not just this one vendor, so.
So is this where we start a Deadpool? Everybody throws in fifty cents, so we should pick a date and a time and see what happens, you know? Raise awareness.
Raise awareness, yeah. So that's an FYI. There will probably be an exchange order for extension coming on that one.
Okay.
How long has that been?
How long has it been over the years? Supposed to be delivered in March.
They started looking to procure it before they even were.
So worried about the timeline.
The PO was sent before the state council, because they knew getting.
So we know what number we are.
I don't think anybody knows at this point.
Yeah.
We just said, hey, we're in the queue. Let's go there.
Yeah. And the last thing I had is that with things drying up, we can see a little for, in the foreseeable future, next week looks to be like you could get to be a little busy with contractors starting back up. Didn't sound like this week was going to be too heavy. Lots of pumping water and whatever else. And then next week, it's a little bit harder. So.
Game on then, right?
Let's start later than usual, but it is. So that's what I have for you this week.
All right. Thanks, Jim. All right. What do you got?
Two updates here. Building permit numbers as of end of April, ninety single family homes, when you look at total dwellings or units, we're at a hundred eighteen compared to last year. Last year, end of April, we were at ninety two permits issued. And we have more in the queue with developments where developers, adaptations, where developments are just coming online. So like Southdale Third, that one is online now. Permits are starting to be issued and that one, you'll see probably a jump in building permits over the next month for in, in May here because of Southdale Third. You'll see other developments where you have Terragardens Third, when that one wraps up and Lakeview, that one wraps up also later this, or throughout the summer, then you'll see building permits for those also. But like to keep you updated, you're on occasion when we have those updates. Also, also, we did a sound masking demo last Friday. We're going to do another one later this week. Trying to still get quotes and everything. So we have one quote, but looked at what the sound masking system could do and met with one vendor here last Friday. So overall, my only thing in from what I've seen, I do think it would help quite a bit. Like I said, we'll demo another one here later this week, see what their system is like, too. And then once we have other demo completed and we have received another quote, then I'll bring that back to council. That's all I have.
All right. Portfolio reports. So last week I was over at, two weeks ago, yeah, I was over at HBA, did a little presentation for them over the noon hour. Where we're at with the city and perhaps get some questions, nothing real hard. Quiziness on some of the things we got going on in town here and said, it also mentioned to them about the erosion control concerns that we got and they are aware of it and I will be, I will get some of them to address that. Yes, that they would press their membership. So it's good. Yeah, I got a couple meetings set up here with the people who are apparently running for council here up in our next election. So I'll be meeting with them through the month here. Met with the Starion Bank here last week ago now. They get an update on where they're thinking things are going and where they see the city act and all positives. They're thinking where the city's going and that's good to hear. If they're happy, then we smile to. We found out here the other day that we are going to do these again in June, June second, I believe. Talk about our rating, see if we can maybe get a bump up on that theme. They liked our story so far and hoping they'll still continue to work with us, but we're meeting with them annually now. The other thing is too, Lions Club put together a deal where they're getting the graduates from the area here banners together. I believe they brought them over to the city.
Yes.
Yep. They'll be getting, they'll be getting hung up here hopefully very soon and. And, uh, we'll probably do the same thing that we did last year. We will have a parade for them for the seniors on the twenty-seventh of May. I'll be announcing that a little bit more, but. Kind of like we did last year, the parade lines up and we just get the seniors to line up underneath their banners. We honk their horns at them and wish them well and all that stuff. That's been well received the last couple of years. I wanna keep it going. I like that. I think we got forty-eight banners if I remember. So. That is upcoming. That's what I've got on my list. Sarah, what you got?
No, just, um, continuing commentary. Love what we do for our seniors. We've gotten a lot of feedback on it. I'm really excited about that. Thank you for continuing that. Um, trying to get, uh, up to speed. We got a bunch of new stuff coming here. Um, I wanted to follow up and, uh, if we don't have any answers today, Breton, if you could get something on the agenda for next time. I'd like to continue our discussion on the forestry initiative for plantings in new developments. I know that we've had a lot of discussion about that and nothing has happened. I don't know if it's been addressed in the, uh, ordinances or not. But I wanna mirror what West Fargo does as far as the boulevard tree planting. We've talked about it and talked about it and it needs to happen. Um, had, uh. I guess, uh, dovetailing on what Cory said, talking about contractors getting busy, Jim. I know you mentioned you're expecting a lot of activity. Um, I personally had to have some conversations with a couple of different contractors in town about barricades. If there's a barricade in your neighborhood, do not drive around it, contractors included. Those barricades are there for a reason. It prevents people from getting stuck or getting into a potentially hazardous situation. Um, please, please do not drive around barricades. Also, going through several of the new developments, um, some of you know, I'm. I take my dog out every day and I hit different developments in our town to keep an eye on the grain with what's going on. Um, hit a couple more of this last week. I had forty miles in last week and another twenty in already this week. Um, Cub Creek is a disaster. So. Jace and Jim, as you're talking to subcontractors in that development, they need to know that they need to keep up their SWIP. And that the dirt that they're tracking on those roads is becoming hazardous to people. So we need to keep that cleaned up. There's a lot of people that live in those developments already. We need to make sure those guys take that seriously. I have no problem with them working in the conditions. I don't want anybody not to work. But if you bury a front-end loader in a ditch, don't drive it down the road. Like scrape it off first, you know? Just look, a little bit of common sense goes a long way. I saw a woman that literally almost went down, coming out her driveway because there was so much mud, she couldn't actually get her dog. So very concerned about that. Um, other than that, the SWIP is important. We've got a lot of runoff with the rains that we just had. We wanna make sure we're not contaminating our local water supply. Please keep an eye on that. That's very important. And, um, I wanted to know when we were planning on opening the compost site. I've got, uh. Number of neighbors I've seen starting to work in their garages on lawn mowers and stuff like that. I want to be able to let people know when the compost site will be opened.
Believe we, I'll verify here.
Just make sure there's an announcement.
I believe there was.
If there isn't already one up on the webpage, make sure there is. And then I saw we also put an announcement out for cleanup day, which is very important. Um, we wanna make sure everybody knows what that is so they can get rid of any type of junk that needs to go. Keep our city beautiful. That's all I've got right now. And I will, uh, meet with you guys this week and help with the laundry list for the grant application.
I got a question.
Yes.
Is it cleanup day? Is our, is our force you've been included in that?
In the Horus area cleanup?
Yes.
It is for residential properties within the state limits of Horus.
Are we in the state limits?
Yes, you are.
Well, I was told last week, uh, we are not included in it, but actually I was told by some of our residents out there, we are not included in it.
You're kidding.
Do they, do they have trash cans or is there a dumpster?
Dumpster.
So if it's a dumpster, it'd be a commercial account, so it would not be included that way. If you have a trash cans, individual trash cans, trash service, residential trash service, then it would be as part of the spring cleanup.
Can our residents vote here in Horus out there in the park? I mean, you're excluded. That was like not being residents or?
It's part, it's part of the trash. So they pay a trash service. So they pay twenty-four dollars a month. Residents pay twenty-four dollars a month for trash service. Through the city, through our, our agreement with Waste Management. And one of the benefits of that is that they get. The cleanup week as part of that. So the city is paying for that through our contract with Waste Management for residential service.
Oh, I get it. You guys have a big dumpster out there?
So they're a commercial account.
Ah.
So if they have dumpsters, they're a commercial account. That is why you would, the trailer park would not be a part of that. If individual trailers had their individual garbage cans and they were billed through the city for their trash that way, then they would have. The cleanup week would participate for them three.
Do, do any of your residents pay for the waste management service or do they all use the dumpsters that are?
We have dumpsters, we have dumpsters that we pay for. We don't charge them for it, but we pay for it. But. What about, we had a tenant who has a refrigerator that went bad. It was getting inside and we called to ask if, if we, if you could come and take up that refrigerator. Um, if we just moved up properly. We were told no.
We were told we are private entity. But I called, hope with. I don't know who it was because they.
Someone at the city or Waste Management?
Somebody at the city. So.
Refrigerators, for example, that's totally separate from Waste Management. So I would have to look into that one.
Well, I was saying, I called last week and I was told that that was a private entity and that. And we can. I don't know, basically, they don't take care of us. At that point, I said, well, private entity, how can, can't do whatever the heck I want out there? That's what they said. A private entity was exactly what it is.
Hmm.
And that was in the, I don't know.
We do have a few situations like that with refrigerator and stuff, but come on, it would be nice to get some clear. We are considered city land, so it'd be nice to be able to have that sort of.
Who do you write your dumpsters through?
We don't really, uh, can sanitation either. And if we could switch to Waste Management, put them out there and.
They were twice as much, the bid was twice as much Waste Management versus can sanitation. Good, right? Cause we, we use them for our other properties and.
Yeah.
Brent, why don't you look into that?
I'll look into it. Just clarification. Yeah, as for the cleanup week.
I was told that we are private entity too, because we have no services provided by the city, kind of what you're saying. But once we get our. Million dollars sewer in there, will we have services from the city at that point?
But.
I mean, that's a service that you guys.
The cleanup, the cleanup weed thing is a separate item then. So I can look in the refrigerator one, get that.
Pick up appliances from.
Typically, we pick up appliances. Well, we typically don't do it for commercial.
No.
But that's why I have to ask their staff about that. Anyway, yeah.
Clarify part of this though. I was told we're a private entity, but if we had. Services from the city, we wouldn't be. And I did ask, was inspectors who I talked to actually now. I don't know what it is, but the building inspector. The reason I spoke with him is because I was told it's private energy and I said, then why are you out here inspecting your stuff? He really didn't have a good clarification answer for me. But now, once we get, we're, we won't be private entity.
Look into it, Brent. Let's find out.
I'll, I'll follow up with this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I think we, yeah, we definitely, I, I think the terminology may be incorrect. Um. Because you have your own commercial garbage service and you've opted for cans over Waste Management. You wouldn't be subject then to all of the things that come with the Waste Management Service, which also includes the cleanup week. Uh, but I'm sure that there's something that could be worked out with Kim. There's likely to be.
Doing, um. Appliances.
No.
Appliances, we have.
The city doesn't.
Yeah, appliances, we take appliances right now. And then we have worked with individuals that'll scrap them. And they come take them and they'll take like the copper and.
Yeah, but nobody has ever picked anything off my yard for an appliance.
Coordinate with City Hall. They've called me. We have it there.
Yeah.
Well, good to know.
But.
Cause that's how you see the refrigerators and stuff outside of our building there. Now, how long that practice of continuing, I can't, I don't know.
As far as, um, the inspectors being on your property?
No, I knew, I just find they are with this, that. Just wanted to challenge what he was telling him, private entity, but then he'd come doing back stuff.
Yeah, I, I, I question the terminology in private entity.
It was, so another gentleman was Todd, somebody too, or city. He's what, he called me back and he told me the same thing. He told me that came from paddle.
Yeah, like I said, you'll clarify this, so that's one way. So let's move along here. Go ahead and get that clarified.
Just since I, when you guys are done, I do have another items. Apologize.
Can, can you just do yours?
Do it.
Okay. Well, the one I have is in regards to the fence along Park Drive. There was damage through snowplow operations. Uh, I've spoken with North Coast Insurance Reserve today. They're likely going to come to us with the denial of the claim. Uh, there is actually statute in North Coast Century Code. Uh, this has been a long going item for them to review. Uh, but they came back and said, North Coast Century Code basically says that liability to political subdivisions, uh, that basically. Were not held liable for that. So. Being that North Coast Insurance Reserve is gonna come back with the denial of that, question would be for council is. If you would like us to fix that fence. Or call back up with your residents and urge them to file a claim with their homeowner's insurance. Uh, we have a quote from Dakota Fence for fixing it. That was right around thirty-five thousand dollars. Um. If. We are to pay for their, the city was to do this or pay for that fence repaired. Then we come either owe a sales tax or general fund, one of those two areas.
Saying it's, it's not the cities, but it's not the developers, then who's?
The. The insurance company for the city has stated that in their century code saying that when we're doing. Normalcy operations like plowing the streets, if there's damage. We're not liable for it. So that's why they're saying that we would be. Not on the hook to pay.
I personally do not like the fact that the fence is broken. I find it just. Annoying because these, these kids and all these families, that fence was put up for a reason, I believe, due to the lagoon. And it is a safety issue in my, in my view. Um. Do I like the cost of the fence? Absolutely not. I, I guess I'm a little confused as to why. Like who owns the fence?
And we have reviewed that, Lucas, Jim, and so, yeah, our public work staff. We have all been going through ownership of that fence and have not been able to find anything saying that the city owns it or whoever owns it.
Okay.
Either way, either way, the insurance is saying that. We're not liable for.
So then every single person along that fence, you're saying would have to chip in and built by their own portion of the fence.
Technically, they would have to go and do that. They would have to go through either their insurance.
And I saw.
Yep.
So.
Talk to me about. The liability part. We go about our normal operation. Something is damaged yet. That's deemed they're not liable.
That makes zero sense.
Um, having contacted the state insurance commissioner to. Get a clarification.
There's actually a court, what I was informed, there was actually a court case on this a couple of years ago up at Ramsey, up in Ramsey County. I was saying to the dressers, believing it was around Devil's Lake area where they had this very situation and. It's under Century Code. I know Lucas is right. My here, chapter thirty-two dash twelve point one, under governmental liability. And that's where their attorney from North Coast Insurance Service identified that.
I mean, I, I had a snowplow destroying my pickup on the interstate. By throwing snow at it. And yes, the highway department fixed my pickup. It's several years. I don't see how little would be in difference.
So, so have you ever heard the terminology, you break it, you buy it?
Yep.
Yeah. That's where we're at here. So.
That's where I am.
Um, as, as far as I'm concerned, this, the, the, it was totally inadvertent, right? Snowplow, we had an inordinate amount of snow this year. Snowplow went around the corner and the, the snow that had built up actually came off the blade, um, very suddenly and over a period of. Uh, where this fence is, the snow actually pushed into the fence and damaged the fence, right? It happens. Okay. Um, I, I've had weirder things happen and we will see this again. Um. What's interesting is we've, this happened back the beginning of January and we've gone through five months of back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. And these poor people have little kids, like Naomi said. And there's a safety concern, right? They don't want their dogs getting out. They don't want all this stuff happen. So, um. Regardless of who owns the fence and what year it was put up and whatever happened, something we did created this issue. And we need to not do that again to the best of our ability, maybe move the plow over. Um, but in the interim, we damaged something that was there for a reason. And so you break it, you buy it. It's my opinion, we broke it. We should get that fence repaired and make it right. Because the reason that that fence is down is on, in no way, shape or form, the fault of the homeowner, right? So I, I guess in the most simplistic of terms, that's the way I see it.
I agree.
Yeah. Um.
I would be very upset if the city plowed busted my fence that was put up by. Must have been.
It was done.
The development.
It was done, done at the time of the development.
Yes. I mean, I feel like.
Okay, then so we make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Sarah makes a motion. How much?
I, I would suggest go up, go up to forty.
Yeah.
Is my suggestion, the reason why is because we have a quote estimate for thirty-five, but they may run across other things. Whereas I'll have to come back to you.
How soon can we get this done? This thing has been like this since January and. These, this poor family is just like, are we ever gonna do anything?
Just, do we hire like a fencing company?
Yes. We're not gonna just.
Our estimate is from Dakota Fence.
Okay.
And, um. I, I would hate to give you an exact timeline just because we know the materials.
Right.
I know, and I had a fence done.
Well, can we try to tell them we want this on, like ASAP? Can we just tell them?
What I wanna know, and this may be a question from Lucas, um. Do we take on the repair or do we release funds and let the homeowners do what they need to do with those funds? What is the best avenue?
City just do it to get it done. So it's all done at the same time. But the concerning thing where this started, why the fence is put, the city is right away in the first place. That's why. Question, it's too close to the boat. My concern is.
So do we need to take a look a little further?
Should not have been put where it is. Is your bigger issue.
So are you saying that now the homeowners are gonna get upset? Cause now we're gonna put a fence even for them on their.
My concern is the city needs that space because that's snow. This year it did not snow in any other year.
Can we make the motion to. But we also need to maybe have a meeting at that development and say homeowners. Like this fence is in the wrong spot and we need. Like probably wanna do it.
Six feet. Yeah, right now.
They're, they're six feet of their.
Fence would have to move north six feet, five feet into the right of.
Are there any structures that are currently in the way? Of where the fence would potentially go if it was adjusted to no longer be in the right of way?
As far as.
Outbuildings.
Oh, I was thinking of storm surinlets.
Anything.
Yeah, yes.
There's storm surinlets and stuff?
Right now, they're on the blue side of the fence.
It, that's the sensor.
Okay.
What happened in this situation?
It seemed so messy on it.
Yeah, cause people didn't do their.
It's, it's really frustrating. I. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to sound rude, but holy smokes. It's like, why is there so much?
I think in grand scheme of things, there's a lot going on in this city and it's been a lot for past five years. The city hasn't had the staff that it needs to support.
No, I'm not talking about the fact that it got broken. I understand things get broken, but what I don't understand is why. Why did, why did the city and whoever was at council at that time allow a fence to be put in the wrong spot in the first place? Like, what are we doing?
Probably David Osser. I mean, if you drive out there and look at it.
Put where it was to be on the plan. So it's put.
You, you got fifty years of people have pretty much done whatever they've wanted to do and no enforcement, right?
No, this was, this was the city who caused that fence to go up because the. The. This is, this is. Is this backed by the lagoon?
this is, this is, is this backed by the lagoons?
Yes.
Okay, when those developments came, the city required fencing to protect the people from their kids running into the lagoons.
Which is not a bad idea.
You wanna know who put, who put the, it was, it was the contractor and the city weren't thinking the process through far enough.
Well, I mean, we can't punish them for
No.
The fence, I mean.
So what what happened to it was, when this was being plowed, it was, the snow came off of the plow further than expected.
Mm-hmm.
It was when they were putting that wing down, that wing helped kick that snow, I mean, it's quite, it's actually.
Is there any way to, when we're plowing next season, to change?
That it's been addressed with our public, it's been addressed.
Okay, so can we just put the fence back where it where it was and not, and just remind the staff when they're plowing on this road that we need to be careful? I mean, I don't know what else we're supposed to do.
Yeah, we're not gonna move the fence, guys, so it's just retarded. We've been, how how many years that fence has been up for quite a while, I don't see the first year we hit it.
Yeah, I mean.
Sloppy snow, we had to blade down, okay, don't do that, let's move on.
If if the whole fence had been destroyed and it was an easy fix and maybe we get an extra foot or two, it would probably make sense. But at this point in time, because half of it's still standing and the other half of it looks like Morse code, ding 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 ding, you know? Let's just correct, correct the wrong, correct the wrong.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm also gonna repair the fence up to forty thousand, it's gotta go, okay?
A second.
Yep, and we seconded it, so.
Is is there a better way we could go about this?
My only concern is it's not just that, are they gonna wreck the fence again, what happens if you need to get to the sewers, though? Guess what, fence comes down, it's in the city right away, I'm just saying, I don't want this council or a different council, whatever year this happens, go back to, why the hell was this approved this way if we need to get access to the storm sewer that's on the other side of the fence? From a legal standpoint, so you can tear down that fence to get to it.
So you're saying?
So I'm saying you're paying to put up a fence.
Well, and also, if the bricks and we're gonna pay for it again.
Correct.
I mean, I think we should.
So what are we gonna do, tell them we're not gonna put the fence back up?
Um, how much?
You should consider here.
Yeah, if we're gonna spend, if we're gonna spend this kind of money.
We should put it back where it goes, right? I think we, yeah.
But they just said it wasn't possible to put the fence where it actually belongs.
Well, just that portion of it, is it honestly, I don't ignore it.
It's individually, it's it's bits and pieces, it's not like one section of the fence, it's like, there's a part broken here and then you go thirty feet and then there's a part broken again and.
All right.
It's it's scattered.
Let's, may I throw an idea out with everyone's permission here? Um, let's take a look at an alternative location for the fence. Can you propose something and bring it to the next meeting? In the interim, I would like to contact the homeowners, the affected homeowners and let them know that we are not opposed to repairing and putting back the fence, however, because there's a right of way issue, we do need to.
You do, you do have structures located within that distance, if we were to move the fence, you have multiple structures, like accessory buildings, different things like that.
That are built on the right of way.
That are built.
On the right of way.
In the, well, within that, so you would have, like, I looked at one property, for example, that I could see a accessory structure that would be
Well.
Technically.
Accessory structures.
Yeah, yeah, maybe.
So.
They're gonna need them to, uh.
We're not the experts, right? You guys are the experts.
This is not on your agenda.
I just came up to it.
I think you guys need to give us what's going to be the best option to make this work, because right now I'm more inclined to say put the fence back where it belongs.
Yeah, it might get messy too. All right, so let's do this.
Or just, excuse me, not where it belongs, put the fence back as it was.
Yes, it's one of that, so let's, uh.
I'll remove the motion.
Just, yeah, so you're gonna remove, you're gonna rescind.
I'll go ahead and rescind the previous motion for the fence.
Yeah, so let's talk about that. Jim, just see if we guys can come up with some proposals on that, I, it's gonna be messy, I got it.
We may have to talk to homeowners and that's okay, even if it's a matter of just getting a couple of feet, whatever we can do.
Well, I mean, if they want the fence, then I mean, we're offering to pay for it, but now we need to figure out how to do it right, if that's the case, I guess, I mean.
It.
We've got a lot of problems.
I, I think we could identify some of the problems for you, I do think it's gonna be very messy, you have, you have sprinkler systems, accessory structures, all these different things that are variables, so. Uh, plus your costs, if you're gonna move the entire fence, that fence goes all the way through to our gardens. So we're not talking just in prayer view, it's.
So let me ask this, how difficult would it be to put a gate every so often into that fence to provide access? If necessary?
You're talking about if we had to do some sewer repair.
Yeah.
That's got.
Just so the city doesn't have it.
If if we have to do a repair, we have, they have to provide access to us. And we can take sections of themselves as needed.
It's not that hard to put it back together. Those those, those maintenance fences are easy to aren't they?
I say put it back and we'll deal with it at the time that it comes if we have to, because at this point, this is another one of those situations that was grandfathered in, and based on what you're telling me with the amount of accessory structures there, I don't know if there's a way we can do this timely.
That was the helping them probably move the structures.
And this, this is my problem, what happens in the interim if we have some kids that get into both lagoons?
Yes, this still goes back to what I was saying, well, that that fence has been up there for a while, this is the first year we touched it, all right, so, be careful.
Ever had issues that we needed to get in the fence before?
Typically, you don't put fence in cities.
You try not to, I get it.
Well, we are getting rid of the lagoons, right? So we'll replace it this one time, and then if the lagoons are gone, we're not gonna replace it again, because there's no safety issue anymore.
That's hopefully the plan soon.
Okay, well.
All right, so what do you want to do, you gotta give it another couple of weeks here, we regroup on it?
Just please, please, you.
I'm sorry to bring this to you.
This is just ridiculous.
Oh, I think Sarah's, uh, update turned into a whole lot more than.
I'm sorry. Holy shit.
Oh.
Pardon my language.
I just, I feel bad.
Uh, I don't know, there is no correct solution.
Nope.
You're gonna, you're gonna make a mad long way to the other.
Yep.
Uh.
So I guess my suggestion would be, guys, is that if you are inclined to do this, that we replace the fence. We hit it, and you say, oh, you're right, we we hit it. Um, let's get it back up there again, like I said, we haven't, we've had some snow, we haven't disturbed that fence until this go around because of the wet sloppy snow. All right? Um, because otherwise, we're gonna spend months figuring this out.
Right.
And that fence won't get repaired, so let's get it repaired.
Just get it done.
Get it done, let's just try and be careful next year we don't get the thing again.
So am I gonna do this again?
You know what, hey, relax, realize that, that we might have to go and do some sewer repair work at some point in time, but.
Well, I think the homeowners should know also, like.
Can we still send the letter?
That they don't expect us to, you know, that again, then we're just gonna keep fixing it.
Well, right, maybe we could send a letter to the homeowners and just say, um, this property line is wrong. And we are willing to fix the fence, but just an FYI in the future, if something is to happen, the lagoons are going out of commission, um, this is our one and done. Can we do that? And then also, if something happens, we will need to remove a portion of the fence and get it into your yard.
I think your best thing is for bench to have a talk with Public Works, tell them to slow down and if there's any project that the city has in the future, we can send a letter saying, just so you know.
Yeah, I just think it's important that they know that that's not their property. On the, you know, that they're encroaching onto.
If there's a, if there's a sewer line, we likely have access there.
Yeah, don't let any more accessory buildings be put up on that side.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
We weren't permitted.
I'm betting they weren't, so.
Could build accessories.
So Lucas, what's the right way to go about, uh, motion?
Motion, you already rescinded the other one.
So I can make a new motion to replace the fence in its original location as it was prior to the damage received from the city.
Keep it under forty K.
Yeah. Yeah, not to exceed, not to exceed price of forty thousand dollars.
All right, so Sarah made a motion, and Naomi did a second, I'm gonna roll call this one, guys, Sarah?
Yes.
Naomi, Chelsea.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Here you go. All right, back to where we were. Naomi, what do you got?
Um, Brent, did you talk to Jim about my concerns? Are we?
We're in B C A, meeting Friday.
Okay, thank you, I wanted to you guys know I wanna talk about um, the congestion that the school have, and I hate that road and you cannot get out in the mornings.
You can't.
Um, there should be no reason why we have to sit there for twenty minutes, um, so I just wanted to look at options of what can we do to get out of, maybe you wanna turn and go north onto County Seventeen. It's impossible, so I'm just wondering if there's anything we can look at.
I said, can we do like a s- just a flashing fifteen mile an hour just from like seven forty-five to eight fifteen? Just slow the cars down so people can get out.
Again, as long as someone forces it.
Yeah.
It's just that that.
If the cars come, they come pretty quick and it's hard to get.
That that's because this, you know, the four-way stop, it's just a constant traffic and you can't go, you just can't. Like, you're literally turning to go down the frontage road to the stop sign and then back around, because you can't get out of there and it's very frustrating. So I just wanna take a look at that, it's gonna get worse.
And look at the traffic that that asphalt frontage road is now taking with all of that traffic, it's just getting beat to death. So, again, you know, I don't know why we bother with asphalt sometimes, but we do.
Otherwise, I don't really have a whole lot for updates, um. Yes, I guess that's coming up. I think it was it. I don't remember anymore, because I'm not into. When, when is it, Sally?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth is a drive, drive sale.
Did we get signs?
Yes, so we're supposed to close up.
Okay, good.
But I mean, they're banned.
Yeah. That's about it, thanks for the reminders, yes.
Spring cleanup is the twenty-first, but.
Yes.
So what do you got?
I got the worst headache of my life, so.
Got it.
I don't have anything as well.
All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Nope, nope.
Nope.
Can I make one? Look at one more thing, too.
So, yeah, we gotta, we have to go into executive session here, Lucas, do you want me to read that?
A part or a? Yeah, so what what's gonna happen is, uh, council will make a a motion to go into an executive session based on language that is provided, uh, under twenty-one, the heading and the name.
Yeah, so, executive session, I'll pursue it to N D C C four point F, zero point dash one hundred and eighteen point one, regarding a current business consultation discussed proposed finally in the facts, conclusions, log, and order related to the of setback areas. So let's take five minutes here, um, put a rule, we'll get.
She need to go by.
Yeah, you have to do it first and second.
Yeah.
So that before we go.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Get me thirty.
I need a second session. Mary's right, that's here, yeah.
Jeff makes a motion to the second.
Second.
Please, sir, the second, all the fair say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's take five minutes here.